To order, it is six o'clock. All council members here are present. I'd also like to acknowledge that we, the City of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and the Squawks Indian Tribe. With that, can I get a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as public?
Second.
It was moved to approve the agenda by Councilmember Greenstein and seconded by Councilmember Stedman. Is there any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion unanimously passes. Let's go around and before we do, I also want to say if there's anyone who would like to provide public comment, please sign up using the sign up sheets located on the table near the entrance. And let's go around and do some introductions here and we're all going to have to talk into the microphone, so I'm going to pass it to my right. Good evening, Rick Walk, City Manager for the City of Lacey.
Esperanza Barrio Diorio, Board Vice President, District Four, North Thurston Public Schools.
Malcolm Miller, City of Lacey, Deputy Mayor.
Michelle Gibson, Board Director, North Thurston Public Schools.
Michael Stedman, Lacey City Councilmember. My kids went to North Thurston all K through twelve and my wife works for the district.
Nick Dunne, Lacey City Council.
Kushi Agarwal, Student Advisor from Timberland.
Celine Joseph, Student Advisor from River Ridge High School.
Sarah Tracy, Board Director for North Thurston Public Schools, District Three.
Carolyn Cox, Lacey City Council.
Lenny Greenstein, Lacey City Council.
Tiffany Severick, District Two, North Thurston Public Schools.
Robin Vasquez, Lacey City Council.
Trey Oliver, Superintendent, North Thurston Public Schools.
Gretchen Maliska, School Board President.
And I'm Andy Ryder, the Mayor of Lacey. I also went to Lacey Elementary, Snook Mill School, and graduated from North Thurston High School, so I'm a Lacey boy. First of all, I just wanted to thank North Thurston Public Schools for hosting us in this beautiful middle school. I've had the opportunity to have a tour since it's been completed and it's absolutely beautiful. And I'm just really proud of our community for, you know, always coming together to support our schools. Because it's been, this was desperately needed and this remodel has been absolutely amazing in preparing our kids for the future. With that, let's go right into our first agenda item, which is our Young Child and Family Center update. Jen and Sean.
Good evening, council members, board members, city and district leaders and community members who have joined us. I'm Sean Dotson, Assistant Superintendent of Operations for North Thurston Public Schools.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jen Burbage, Director of Parks Culture and Recreation for the City of Lacey. And Sean's going to get us started and then I'm going to come in later in the presentation.
All right, well, we're excited to give you an update on the Young Child and Family Center and our progress on this project. And let's see. This project, it really is a unique collaboration between a variety of agencies, many of whom you see here, but there are others who have come to the table and we continue to hear interest from other partners who want to find a way to help with this project. Really, all of these agencies recognized similar need for services for our young children and families in the community, whether it's a shortage of preschool programs, wellness needs, recreational needs and family education. And this project is an attempt to work together rather than working separately to meet those needs. And to share a little bit about that, that has led to a vision for this project and a set of goals that are really meant to meet that aim. We want to make sure we create an open and accessible space that will serve up to 600 preschool age children while also sharing amenities with the public during and outside school hours. So we can, can work with the public in a variety of areas and you'll see that played out in the space in a moment. We want a space that supports diversity, diversity and inclusion, really equitable spaces for our students, adults and the greater community. And that's looking at the classroom spaces and all of the support spaces and play spaces that we put together here. We want to make sure we're fostering community engagement. This is a partnership and so that is threaded throughout the development of this project. And that requires flexibility. And because we have, through the, thankfully, through the support of our voters and, oops, we'll get back on to that in just a moment, but with the support of our voters, we have funding to go forward with a significant portion of this project, but we can't do it all right now. And with that, we need a space that can be easily expanded to adapt to changes in the future, opportunities to expand and more fully realize the vision and to build and have building systems and materials that support really sustainability of the site and focus on health. Because this is also intended as a wellness hub in order to help us meet those educational, social, emotional, mental and physical needs of our children and families. That is all a part of the vision of this space and hopefully you'll see that as we show you an image of where we are right now. To give you a quick look at the timeline for the project, really early conversations around the Young Child and Family Center started back in about 2022 and we started bringing together partners to support this project. Through grant funding and through support from our voters, we've reached the point where the grant funding helped us to move forward with concept design and we're able to move forward with really building the first portion of this project. So where we are right now, and that's the second dot you see on the side here, is we're at the schematic design phase of this project where we're starting to take the big ideas and figure out how they all fit together. And we'll get throughout this year in the deeper and deeper depths until we really have a refined plan for that project with construction documents next spring, early site work beginning next summer, and then moving to construction by next winter and through the spring of 2027 with a plan to open that in the summer of 2027. So that's the general timeline for taking this forward. And to give you a sense of the site, we're setting this just north of Nisqually Middle School on a piece of, a large piece of property that the district owns there, just off of Marvin Road. And this is, as you know, a very busy hub of our community with the rack right across the street, our regional athletic complex, a future single-family residential neighborhood straight across the street, and additional future athletic fields to the south. And if you've been to any of our middle schools, including coming tonight, you know they are hubs of a lot of activities and athletics for our community, both school and community-based activities. So it's an exciting site for this project. To give you a look at where we are in the planning right now, what we have envisioned is a building that will have three classroom wings and what you're seeing is not the whole thing, so each picture will build on this. But three classroom wings, each that would have up to eight classrooms. So if we get the full build out, that would allow 24 classrooms. You see arrows representing doors out of those with a covered play spaces off of each classroom to allow the kids to have some outside play. And you see where it's labeled as outdoor learning between those wings. We're still working on that concept, but I'll show you a bit of a vision of what that could be in the future. And a central play area in the middle of this facility for our students during the day. You see Marvin Road just to the bottom of the picture with the parking lot coming off of Marvin. In front of each of those classroom wings, we're, we're working on having gross motor spaces, spaces where you can have free play or students that might need physical therapy. And these are flexible spaces that allow for some of those types of community partnership programs that we talked about, wellness programs, other things that gives us a really flexible space. And they're all connected by hallways, so this is all interior. It's not going outside from building to building, it's just to help you see. So with an administrative space, you see in the yellow on that slide, that is where our families would come in, it provides a secure entry and a secure space for the school during the school day. And then at the other end of this U-shaped building, you see a library that would, that we are working with Timberland Regional Library around operating. And the community can come into that library and with the hallway up there, it allows for students to come in from the student side, for us to secure that space either way and to have the ability for us to have students in, to have community in, or through a reading room to be able to accommodate both in the times that we need to. You see a courtyard in the front of that space between the parking lot and the building. And I should go back, this is the part of the project that we have funding at this stage to build, which is really exciting. There's a, there's a lot here that's going to create some of those partnerships right off the bat. To fully realize the vision, there's an opportunity to build a future rec center that might meet, that could meet our, our aquatics or indoor play or a variety of those community needs, a combination thereof, as we figure out together how to, how to make that project a reality. And with this courtyard, what we envision, you see the play area inside is intended to be fenced so that we have some security for kids during the school day, but that they can play. And as you come in off of it, you're really seeing that, have that, that it becomes a community focus. But then outside of that, even when school's in, you have the opportunity to potentially have a splash pad or other play equipment. This is, it's hard to on this scale envision this, but this is a large courtyard area actually. And, and through that, when school's out, the opportunity to open those gates and have the inside also be potentially a play area. So there's a lot of opportunity for that collaboration in this space. To give you a sense of what that could look like, this is, this is Olympic View Elementary in Federal Way School District. Some of our staff visited this as we were looking at it. What they've done is they've really done for those outdoor education areas, they've created some nature spaces for kids to have the opportunity to interact with nature, flora and fauna that they can actually touch and feel and, and experience as well as community gardens. So we're working on that vision right now, but really see some opportunity for that to really enhance. And outdoor education for young children has huge potential and is high interest. And so an opportunity we're exploring and seeking to develop through this project. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jen.
Do you mind if I switch these out? We're going to switch look spots here for the microphone. All right, and here you just see some, some images of.
Yeah, yeah, oh, sorry. I think this is just meant to help you really see what we're looking to create in terms of feel of the project. I apologize.
Yeah, no, that's okay. No, it's all good, just some images there. And so this will sound familiar to our council members because this is a similar update to the last one. During 2021 through 2023, the, as you know, the Parks Culture and Recreation Department engaged the community with outreach and communication to close communication gaps that might have existed regarding priorities and to inform the 2023 Comprehensive Plan Update. Some of those key takeaways that we found do match up with the Young Child and Family Center project. And those are aquatics opportunities, particularly for families with the warmer temperatures, indoor facilities such as indoor pool and indoor playground, as you see pictured over there in the right, outdoor spray parks, and in addition to trails and preservation of natural areas, and then completion of planned sports fields. And the city council engaged in a couple of discussions this past, you know, over the past year in regards to parks funding strategy, and those were in April and May. And as you know, directed staff to work on a resolution for an ad hoc Parks Improvement Funding Work Group. And that group, that work group was put together with the help of council, a council committee and recommended to the full council. And that group is very much underway. We are meeting twice a month and that group will be making recommendations to council in December as planned. The work group is reviewing all the projects in the Parks Capital Improvement Program, which is a part of that comprehensive plan that I just mentioned. And so there could be potentially a city contribution depending on the outcome of that group and the recommendation that's made to council. And future conversations, you know, could include exploration of grant opportunities and other types of opportunities that might be available for the Young Child and Family Center project that the city could come in and apply for. For example, one of the things that could potentially be pursued is working with JBLM on a Defense Communities Infrastructure Program or the DCIP that we've discussed before. And there could be, you know, another program that could be used in conjunction with that to leverage and see what resources we might be able to pull in for this type of project. And with that, either of us are happy to answer the questions you might have.
Are there any questions?
So you said there'd be, the goal is 24 classrooms. How many childcare slots is that? I'm assuming we're talking about zero to five?
So the maximum build out of the project would be 24 classrooms. We initially, you know, we know we're going to probably in the end, when we put funding together and identify what we have, we may not get a full 24 at this stage. But what we do intend to have is enough classrooms on site that we can serve up to 600 students. And so if we can get to that full build out, we may be able to exceed that substantially. But that's going to kind of depend as we put everyone's heads together and figure out how to meet all of the, the pieces of this project within the available funding.
And is it a zero to five? Is the goal to serve zero to five, like infants through pre-K?
You know, I think our, our target throughout has primarily been in that three to five range. While, while younger children, it doesn't mean we wouldn't have services and supports for families with younger children, but I think the target for the preschool programs has primarily been that three to five range.
And you intend to serve kids that are eligible for state subsidies for childcare? Like the lower income that are receiving state subsidy?
Yeah, and we've been, we've been talking with partners around what are a variety of ways you can meet needs. So there's programs like ours in the school district that are not dependent on income eligibility. There are some programs that are, whether that is Head Start or E-CAP programs that have more. So we're really talking with partners around how can we have a variety of programs that serve students who might fit best in those different categories? And they have different service models that are best tailored to support students with a variety of needs.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you for your presentation. Every time you are in front of us, I learn lots more, so thank you so much. I have several questions, so thanks for waiting with me. The future athletic fields that you showed on the site map, is the church remaining there or is that something that is going to go away for the athletic fields?
Yeah, so for the athletic fields, the city currently owns the 26 acre parcel that is next to the church. So nothing would change with the church. That's just a city, city property, city project.
Thank you. And Sean, I heard you say that we have funded the outdoor space and the classrooms. Have we funded all 24 of them? I got confused on the last answer.
So, you know, the hard part when you're at this stage of construction is the total cost of the project is still a little fluid based upon what's in those spaces and how they operate. So we have the big idea, 900 square foot classrooms, the, the, the spaces we want to have in there. As we work with the architect and we put this and we bid this project out, we'll get clear on what we can accomplish in terms of the exact number of classrooms. But we've designed it for up to 24 with the plan. If we can't get there now, that allows for future expansion. And that's part of the flexibility here too, is if we can't get, get the full distance now with what we have, we, we put ourselves in position, we're going through an alternative works construction project where we bring the contractor on early to help us plan it in such a way that if we want to expand in the future, we're prepared to do so.
Thank you. I, and I also really appreciate the library onsite. I think that is a wonderful resource to our families, especially our young families. Can you describe to me what a gross motor space is?
Well, the space itself is fairly simple. When I was an elementary principal, I remember we, we sometimes, when we were in a full building, had a physical therapist doing PT in the hallways because they needed a space for kids where they could have them moving and playing and, and engaging those activities. The gross motor space is larger than a standard classroom. It's a, it's a little different shape, but really provides an open area during the day where you can have a physical therapist working with kids or pull out small groups, but it's a large open space for that. And what it also allows for is the flexibility, as we've talked about the interest in wellness programs and partnerships with the city, where you might be able to be outside of school hours, offering programs that would be, rather than trying to bring maybe parents into a classroom that's designed with chairs for preschool students, you might be able to bring them into that gross motor skills space and have that flexible for providing the types of partnership programming we hope to offer.
Thank you. And, and each of you have said hoped funding and possible funding. Do either of you care to dive into those details for us?
Yeah, I think, you know, what we can talk about is we go back to what I said, we're able to build now and, and we know it'll be up to 24 classrooms with perhaps less, depending on what the current funding will drive in the final project. Future funding, what we're discussing is whether that is, whether out of the, the city study that the city sees a willingness and a support for, and the board determines a need to invest in that through this partnership, we've worked with YMCA through grant funding, other options out there. And we continue to explore with foundations, anyone that, that shows an interest to help us find that pathway to the funding that lets us fully realize. And it might be in stages. It might be that there's a piece of this we see now that we can accomplish. And it might be that we say, you know, there's parts of it we can't fund now, but we're going to continue to work together and look at opportunities in the future to, to, to seek that funding at the right moment. I don't know if that's.
Yeah, and I'll just add, yeah, it is definitely a jigsaw puzzle of, of being able to, you know, put those pieces together and figure out what, what all the partners can bring to the table. And like I'd said in my presentation, our city council has asked us to, you know, work with this work group. And our Parks Capital Improvement Program is pretty robust. It's a pretty long list of projects. And we do know that some of the top themes from the community input do match up with this program. And so, so that's where, like I said, there is a potential for a city contribution, but you know, we won't be 100% sure until this work group has, is done and made a recommendation and it's ultimately up to our council. So that's kind of where we're at. And, but really pulling in, like the YMCA is a partner as well. And there's opportunities that they can apply for that the city cannot. And so that's where, you know, we'll just try to, as Sean said, bring as many resources as we can to this project because it's, we're all serving the same families.
Absolutely. So I do appreciate the process and I hope that we can circle back around to that excitement and buy-in that we started with.
Just briefly, Jen, you mentioned the DCIP grant potential. Would that grant be for the classrooms or like educational infrastructure? Or is it flexible enough that we could use it for the rec center? Or do you know? The, I guess I've been thinking in terms of the recreation components with the DCIP.
Yeah.
So we've actually already been back to DC a couple of times looking for funding opportunities. What we've learned this last, I guess, this last March was there is funding available. I think that would fit very well with this, but they really want to see the project. They want to know what the project is and they kind of want to be the last dollars in. Which makes it a little, little difficult. It's a timing issue, right? And so it, it, there seem to be some excitement, you know, and support. And like I said, this is been a, it is a priority. We've, we've reached out to our federal lobbyist and he's constantly looking to see what opportunities are specifically for this project. But is there going to be an opportunity for us to actually do a design with a cost estimate? Because it really feels like we're going to need that at some point for some of these grant opportunities. We're going to have to sort of show what it is and how much it's going to cost. And then we can sort of go from there to figure out a funding strategy.
Yeah, I think that's the, the chicken or the egg challenge here, right? Because as we, as we get further into this design process and we have grant funding that's helped us get to this stage and as we continue to move forward, we'll be, we'll get down to the fine details on the section we're building right now. The question will be how far we take the design process on that, on that section that is for future development. And I think we can continue the conversation there to figure out where that ends. We do know that the further along we get in this project, as you've said, those shovel-ready projects, when they see this as a reality and not just a possibility, but we can't fully meet our vision without additional support, I think we become more attractive for that kind of funding. So it's, it's, that's the constant exploration here of figuring out how far along should we be to get that kind of a grant attention? And, and what kind of commitment do they need to see from, between us as a partnership on that section for them to say, yeah, we're ready to help put in funding?
Does anyone else have any other questions? I mean, this is exciting. We, we know there's a huge need in our community for this. You know, even this lines up as we've, we've talked about with a lot of priorities from, from our council of things that we know our community wants. And so it's just a matter of how do we pay for it? And I, you know, I think we're right there trying to figure out ways we can get it done. And we look forward to continue working with North Thurston Public Schools and hopefully making this a reality at some point. Anything else? Before I go on to our, our next agenda item, I just want to check back in with public comments. I didn't have anyone come up to me and said, yeah, someone signed up for public comment, but is anyone from the public wishing to comment? Okay. Then let's go on to our next agenda item, which is our youth. Thank you. Please introduce yourself and keep your comment to three minutes.
My name is Loretta Burns and I actually live in the area of this proposed building. And since I didn't have access to the presentation today, it's hard to do an informed public comment. But I'll do it anyways. I have one question. I know this, a lot of the money for this from the school district side is coming from the bond that was passed. And one of the questions I had during that time is where's the funding coming from to employ all of the people that are going to work in this building? The other thing is, it's interesting that it's located north of the freeway in the Meridian Campus area, as far as I know. Okay, I saw, that's what it looked like from the map, it's north of Marvin Road.
Yeah, it's right next to Nisqually Middle School. So right by the rack.
Right by the what?
Regional Athletic Complex.
Okay, so it's over there. Okay. But anyways, yeah, so it's, it would be nice if we'd actually had access to this presentation in advance so we could be formed and make public comment. And from the school district perspective, because they haven't really shared about this at all at any school district meetings. And I'm not sure what this meeting is. But anyways, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else listening? Okay. Well, now let's go on to our next item, which is our youth advisory groups. Nikki and Sandy.
Good evening. Hello, city council members, board members, Superintendent Oliver and student advisors. My name's Nikki Grubbs. I'm an Assistant Superintendent of School Leadership at North Thurston Public Schools and honored tonight to talk with you about the Superintendent's Student Advisory. Thank you. Okay, go ahead and advance the next slide. Thank you. Oh. Thank you. Okay, we have two types of advisories in our schools. And the first is a Principal's Advisory Committee that each principal has. But we also have a Superintendent's Student Advisory, which is really pretty special. I haven't seen it in, in many school districts. And the purpose of having this advisory is to get student advice, student voice and to get ideas from kids about changes that we're making, programs that we currently have enacted in our district, and to find out what we need to improve in our schools. And just to basically give them a voice so they can share their concerns and what they're proud of. We work with all of our schools to, to have members such as fifth grade students, eighth grade students and 12th grade students be a part of this. Our kids get to interact with one another and they come from different levels, from the elementary, middle and high. They also get an opportunity to share their opinions about new foods that we're trying to bring out in the lunchroom and for breakfast. So we give them a taste test. And just to share important information through our kids, we have a genuine feedback loop. And, um, just to share important information through our kids, we have a genuine feedback loop that goes back to the principal and then back to the kids. So that we are all communicating and sharing of ideas. Okay, a little bit about the composition of the committee is that we ask for kids that have strong communication abilities, um, are not afraid to collaborate with one another, and they're just really good communicators overall. We ask for one student from each of the thirteen elementary schools. And each year we rotate between a boy and a girl so that we have pretty even numbers. Um, one student from each of the five middle schools, one student from, um, Summit Virtual Academy and Ignite Family Academy, which are choice schools in our district. Um, we also ask for one senior boy, one senior girl from each of the four high schools. And then we have our student advisors who are on the board. They also come. And then we have a total of thirty-three kids. We have four meetings a year and at each meeting we have a different topic that we focus on. Uh, we provide transportation to get the kids there at the district office in the boardroom we generally meet. And some of the examples of taste tests that kids have provided feedback for are breakfast sandwiches, the roasted jalapeno corn dish, rosemary potatoes, a plant-based patty, breakfast burritos, breads and hummus, lemon grass chicken, pineapple salsa that turned blue, a cheese zombie with ham. And so that's really fun for kids. They give us feedback. And then we also have topics such as what was the start of school like? What's the transition from one school to the next school like and how can we improve it? Um, how do kids feel about their level of belongingness in their school? And we look at survey data that we do every year with the kids. Um, we've asked them for input about grading practices. And we have a new mobile device policy or practice where kids are not to have their cell phones out in class during the day. So we call it off and away all day. Um, middle schools have already had that rule and high schools implemented it this year. And we also ask for input about dress code, clubs and activities and athletics. So it's grand fun. And I want to also mention that it's great fun for our superintendent so that he gets to spend some time with kids, which is the most important thing. Thank you.
Good evening, council and board members. My name's Sadie Siglin. I'm the Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office at the City of Lacey. And one of the things that I get to do is service the staff liaison for the Lacey Youth Council. Let's see. So the Lacey Youth Council is an advisory board to this Lacey City Council. And they're kind of unique, unlike all of our other advisory bodies. They also are set up similar to our city council where they have kind of a structure with a mayor and deputy mayor and other positions. Our Lacey Youth Council has up to fifteen members each year who are sophomores, juniors and seniors from Lacey public, private and homeschool student bodies. This year we're kicking off our fifth cohort, so still fairly new, just getting on the tail end of the pandemic. So we've really been able to accomplish a lot of new things the last two years. This year is the first year that we have had more applicants than spaces on the youth council. We had twenty-seven applications to serve on the youth council this year, which is pretty incredible. And within that, for the first time, we had students applying from homeschool student bodies as well. So really diversifying our youth council voice and experiences across the board. As I mentioned, this is a unique advisory board that's set up similar to our city council. We have a youth mayor, a youth deputy mayor and a youth clerk. And this year we added a social media coordinator and this position helps work with our communications team to try and target some of our advertising for youth. So we can get feedback from the youth and kind of connect. I'm sure you all noticed, we communicate and get information very differently than youth. So that is a really important new role that we're excited to have to try to bridge that communication gap and how we send information out as the city and how we can get information to our youth. In addition to those roles, we have advisory board representatives. So these council members get to run and sit on advisory boards as active members. We have members on the Commission of Equity, the Historical Commission, the Library Board and the Parks Culture and Recreation Board. And this year, the city has a current ad hoc human services work group. So we were able to have a youth council member as an advisory board representative to this board for the first time. One really cool thing about this is it gives our youth council members a real taste of what advisory board members do. They, like all of our advisory board members, are eligible to opt in for an advisory board stipend, which can pay them fifty dollars per meeting, up to five hundred dollars a year if they want to help pay for things like gas to get to meetings, their cellphone bills and any other expenses it might take to participate in the youth council and get to and from these events. Last year we had a youth council member graduate and for the first time, actually, we had one apply to serve as an adult advisory board member, which is pretty exciting to see that come full circle from testing it out as a student to deciding that they want to continue their service to the community even after high school. So we're very excited to see that kind of come full circle this year. The youth council meets twice monthly to conduct business. They meet on the first Tuesday of each month and then the third Tuesday of each month. And on that meeting, they report out to our Lacey City Council. One representative from each student body reports on what's going on in the school, what they're experiencing, what they're concerned about. And then we also have one report that the youth council decided to add last year to update the city council on what they're doing in their meetings. So the city council now also gets an update that, hey, this month the Lacey Youth Council got to go check out the maker space and learn what they do there. So that has been a really great update from them as well to keep the council and the community involved in what they're doing in their meetings. They also participate in joint meetings. They have a joint session with the Lacey City Council every year at the end of their term to give them an update on what they learned, what they have questions about, what they think the council can do to help future youth councils. And they also meet with the Commission on Equity once a year to talk about concerns in the community and how they think that we can help bridge these gaps. We also have the youth council meet with staff and learn about how the city runs, what projects we're working on. And just in general, how things are done. We all kind of know the basic principles of how government runs, but each city's different. So learning what a council manager form of government does here in Lacey could be very different than what they experience later in life. They also get the opportunity to connect with city staff and community members outside of meetings. We've had youth council members who want to connect with staff on certain water projects just to learn more about that. So it's a really great opportunity to give them access to city staff and resources that they may not have known about and to collaborate on projects and connect with people like Jen to say, hey, we really want a splash pad. And I know they have brought that one up more than once. The youth council also brings back to the city concerns they have as youth in the community. And regularly in their updates to the council, they will bring up things like, oh, we're really worried about houselessness. And this is what we're seeing as youth and this is what our peers are experiencing. Do you guys know what's going on? So it's a really great opportunity for them to provide their perspectives on their concerns and things that we as adults may not experience or see in the same way. They also get to give feedback to the city on things that we are working on and trying to improve. Recently, the city updated the public comment policy and the youth council had a really great feedback on that. And a really great learning opportunity about freedom of speech and what we can do, what we can't do, and how important it is for our community to be able to give us feedback on items. This year, the city, as you just heard, is working on our comprehensive plan. The youth council is going to have the opportunity to take our comprehensive plan survey and then follow up with staff and really give feedback on, hey, this kind of didn't apply to me as youth, or I feel that this was missing. And this is what we want to see in the future and really give that feedback to guide the city's direction over the next ten to twenty years. They also participate in taking the demographic survey that's offered to all of our advisory board members to help better understand who's participating and how we could spread that reach further to further diversify our advisory boards and get more community involvement. They also do a lot of community engagement. So there is a few pictures up here. Last year, the youth council hosted a youth summit for the first time ever, which was a free event for youth to come to, to learn about city resources. Free pizza was a big perk. They did headshots so students could take those and build LinkedIn profiles. There was resume review, all things that the youth council identified as a need for youth in the community and offered. They also collaborate with other groups. Recently, our youth mayor had the opportunity to go to the YMCA's Youth and Government Meeting to learn more about that organization and what they do and bring that back to his youth council and his peers at school as an opportunity for youth to get more involved. So they're out there doing a lot of great things. We started the term off already in September with an orientation. At this orientation, we do a lot of team building and assessing what the youth council's unique interests for the term are, how we can set them up to learn about everything that they want to learn about. And they also take this time to set up some values. So the last two years, the youth council has gone through an exercise to identify what are their most important values and how do they want to be perceived by the community. So you can see up here, this year they really value leadership, personal development, excellence and making a difference. And this is something that they reflect back to at all of our meetings. How can we make a difference? How are we personally developing and using that throughout the term? We have some upcoming events, including the twenty-twenty-five Lacey Youth Summit, which is identified as a potential collaboration opportunity for us and the school district to get involved. Last year, we had the opportunity to have Troy come in and talk to the youth council about how the school is governed versus how the city is governed. And so we're here to, to just hear from all of you if you have any other ideas for future potential collaborations or any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you for that presentation. When we met last spring, um, you had quite a few vacancies still and we kind of discussed ways to improve recruitment. What do you, what did you do different and what do you think it was that really, um, increased your applications?
Last year was the first year we had the opportunity to come and talk to all of you. And I was surprised how many students said, oh, my mom heard that you were at the school board joint session and heard about this. So I think that really went a long ways. Parents listen and pay attention and get updates from all of you. So that collaboration opportunity, I think, really helped spread the word. We've also been trying to amp up the Lacey Youth Council Instagram and spread more information on that, recognizing youth uses Instagram a lot more than Facebook and other communication platforms that we had historically tried. Spending out posters at the schools, dropping them off in places like Starbucks, the Brother and Sister Club, things like that, just anywhere that people could go. Or maybe a parent would go and see that information and take it back. Our youth council members also take that information back to their school. We provide them posters and brochures. So they're out there networking with their friends and telling them, hey, this is such a great opportunity. You might be interested in that. So I think the word of mouth really helps. They go to a few city events. Last year, the Spring Fun Fair, they had a booth at and a lot of families in particular with young children and high school age children attend the Spring Fun Fair. So that's a really great place for them to be out in the public and get some face time and spread the word about what they're doing and get more information. A big change we made with the application process was shortening it. We heard back from applicants in the past that if they see it, they really want to apply, but oh, they have to go and do seven or eight questions. So we really shortened that this year. We made a QR code. So youth members-
Great, thank you.
There's a question for Nikki, actually. Uh, for participating in the superintendent's advisory, how do students express interest if they want to participate or how are students selected?
They're generally selected by principals. Principals try to select students that have lots of different interests, um, whether they're in athletics or activities or just a different, different variety of types of kids. So they get lots of a variety of voices.
This one working. All right, we're good. Um, this question might be a little bit boring for the board, uh, but Nikki might be able to answer it too because it was a, a topic that was brought up during one of the slides. Um, I first found out about the, uh, mobile phone policy, uh, from a student at River Ridge. And I know when I got my first phone at seventeen and had it in school, it was definitely a distraction. But I know that if someone had tried to take it away, I probably have been pretty upset too. Um, so twenty-three years later, we're realizing that, you know what, this might not be a great idea to have all the time. So I was just really wondering at how, um, how that process has gone this year in the high schools and, uh, what type of, um, feedback we've got from the students on that.
We have received such good feedback. Um, we, it's been kind of surprising, actually. We've gotten so much good feedback, um, from kids at the advisory council. And the funny thing is that kids talked about how addicted their parents were. So they had more concerns about their parents than themselves. But kids were very, felt very relieved that the expectation was to put them away in classes because they're better able to focus. They're telling us that they are interacting more with each other. And so we've been delightfully surprised by that. Of course, teachers love that. And also this entire expectation was initiated through teachers.
Hi, everyone. My name's Ashley. Um, my personal feedback on this and from my peers is that we think it's going great overall. Um, it does suck to not have your phone at lunch in passing period. But overall, I've noticed that at least my learning and like productive, like being productive has definitely improved. Like I'm not feeling as tired as I usually do at the end of the day. And I just feel like I'm really like retaining like the learning that I like, like the information that I learned from my teacher during that period. So overall, my peers and I like it. Honestly, the more like thing that's kind of a con for them is the no headphones because they feel like at least during individual like work time, like they like produce better work with music. And I personally agree with that one too. But overall, I've noticed that, um, the teachers are able to get like a more productive classroom, like more students engaging with the teachers and their questions instead of just like one student answering and the rest of the class is on their phone. So, yeah.
Hey, hi, I'm Kushi from Timberline High School. And so the same thing goes at Timberline, um, a lot of what Ashley said. But also another thing that surprised me was actually how well it's being enforced. We haven't really had problems with kids just like straight up not listening or teachers having to do repeated reminders. It's pretty much a mutual understanding that like we're not supposed to have our cell phones out or our headphones or anything like that, um, obviously except for students with 504s or IEPs. And I think for the most part, there's like a general consensus that it's actually really helping us. And I think for the most part, there's like a general consensus that it's actually really helping us. In like the classroom that when you don't have your phone out, it's like, what else can you do besides pay attention to the teachers? So it's like, it's really creating a better classroom environment, in my opinion. And it's just helping the teachers be able to focus more on their teaching as well because of the distraction for teachers as well. If they see their students just not paying attention, being on their phone. It's kind of harder to be able to see progress in students as well. So I think it's going well overall. As far as my knowledge goes, five oh fours and IEPs are support programs for students with disabilities. And I mean, this isn't really my area of expertise, but. Yeah, so it's just support programs for students in like different areas. Whether it be disabilities or like maybe someone has trouble focusing, then they can use their headphones in class. It's an exception for them.
Hi, I'm Celine Joseph from River Ridge High School. I've also heard a lot of good feedback from students and from teachers. About how putting your phones away is better in class, like it helps with students' learning, paying attention. And also like engaging in the classwork with their peers and the teachers. I think the only thing that I've heard that might not be so positive from students and teachers. Was how, or their feelings about having the phones away during lunchtime. Like some teachers feel like students should be able to have their phone out since it's not like during class time. But yeah, that's mostly what I've heard.
I'm back again. Another thing that I think is a good thing about this cell phone policy. Is I feel like already I've heard from some of my teachers I have last year is that they're more like happy to teach. Because like when students aren't listening to you and you feel like that your time is being wasted and like students aren't taking in, in the information that you're teaching. It can lead to burnout. And I think that this cell phone policy will hopefully reduce burnout of teachers. And will create a better teacher-student relationship. So that way, the student gets the best of their learning and information taken and that teacher feels respected and appreciated for putting out that information. And yeah, that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you. I'm, I'm really glad this came up and I, I talked with the superintendent for a few minutes before the meeting. I went to a meeting of Thurston Thrives, which is an organization made up of many parts. That's concerned with community health and youth health and mental health is one of the big areas of study. And we had several different experts coming at it from different directions. But talking about how the use of smartphones, I mean, they've, they've got data tracking this. Literally is changing the way our brains work and the way we learn. And is very destructive in terms of kids being able to develop communication skills. Learning to negotiate when we have differences. And you know, there were real fears that, you know, a lot of kids were isolated. We were starting to see the thoughts of suicide go up and, you know, completed suicides go up. So it's, I think it's a wonderful, wonderful thing that the North Thurston School District is doing. And I'm, I'm really encouraged to hear the students embrace of it as well. My question, and I haven't posed this to my seatmates on the council, so this is cold. But you know, if there's something that our council can do to encourage this. And to talk about how, how we live life with our phones in a healthy way. Healthy community. Thank you.
I like your comment about student-teacher relationships and that this is strengthening those student-teacher relationships. And I, I was thinking about, as you were saying, I was thinking about how, you know, as a teacher, you would go get your masters and masters and your, your bachelors and your masters and all your certificates. And then you show up to work and you have to compete with a phone, right? So that was just a quick comment on that. So I'm glad it's working. I did have a question for Sadie and her team about student government involvement. Or should I say Lacey City Council, Youth Council involvement in some of the processes like capital projects? And the reason why I say that is because as I see, you know, North Thurston was able to pass, pass their bond. And then you have a much different situation in Yelm. And so we couldn't have two better dynamics to learn from and teach from than, than those two. And at the same time, you know, we've got the capital projects that have been happening here in, in, in this county where, you know, Kamachin. River Ridge, years ago was North Thurston. And I was wondering, is there an avenue or an opportunity for students to, to learn about the, 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 the economic part? Of, of the, of the school districts and their funding and, and the remodeling and the capital projects? Especially this new center that we're getting involved in. Is there an avenue there that we could possibly involve them at a deeper level?
Yeah, great question Deputy Mayor. One thing we do always try to teach each youth council, one is the basics of a city budget. How that works, what that process is like. And then unique projects, it kind of depends on the interest of each individual youth council. Some of them are very interested in certain projects, some aren't. What we do is try to make available for them any opportunities to learn further, even if it's an individual council member reaching out and saying, Hey, Ms. Siglin, I'm really interested in that. I'm able to connect them with those resources and point of contacts. So they can further their interest in that, even if it doesn't necessarily make a meeting or an agenda item for the entire youth council meeting. Now, they are working on the comprehensive plan this year and will be able to take some surveys. And I think that will really open up some opportunities for them to better understand what we're doing and what's going on in our community. They also will get to watch tonight's meeting because it's being publicly recorded and we like to send the updates to them. So they'll get to learn more about these projects by watching and follow up. And there's definitely an opportunity that we could co-host meetings or have the school district come similar to last year. And present on specific things. So it all just depends on what's going on that year, what projects are going on. But I think there's always an opportunity to add that in. And finance is a really huge point of interest for our youth council. So I definitely think that's something we could build off.
Thanks to both of you for your presentation tonight. It's, it's always helpful for us to dive in and learn more. I, I am looking forward to seeing your students. I would have loved that tonight. I realize time constraints and our, and we're in a different facility, but I would have loved to see even a co-presentation from the student groups. I think that would showcase what is happening. You did wonderfully and you, you had a beautiful presentation. But I think that may be missing from what we'd love to see in the future. And you, you said that some of those ideas came out of our meeting from last time. So that, that was really wonderful to hear. I, I know Thurston County has a Thurston Leadership Program as an adult program. I'm not saying the title right. But they actually have a youth program that's running out of New Market Skill Center now, and I think that would be a great segue. And you would learn a lot about the finances behind capital projects, not necessarily in school districts, but around the county. You see a lot of the backside of industries that are representative in Thurston County as well. I think the opportunity to do something joint with our youth and during your youth summit would be wonderful. And how we can coordinate that. There are many, many college and career fairs, and I wonder if that's an opportunity for collaboration. St. Martin's just had their business day. They have one in the springtime coming up as well in a different content area. I'd love to see kind of college visits that are in tandem. If you have students who are in the homeschool system, they have a different exposure opportunity to what their next step is. I think those are really, you know, things that are already developed that we can plug into and change. And enhance the student voice and that student learning, both for our students, representatives as well as yours. So thank you.
Yeah, and I will share the Thurston County Chamber of Commerce has reached out this year. They saw our youth summit last year and were very interested and they are on the schedule to come talk to the youth council. Because they specifically want to hear, hey, how can our businesses connect with you further? And what kind of feedback can you guys give to them to really appeal to younger demographics? So we're excited to have kind of that nexus with them this year and look forward to more opportunities. As you said, to collaborate with all of you and definitely looking forward to youth summit opportunities this year.
Another thing I would like to see at our youth summit, which is I think a good opportunity to collaborate with North Thurston Public Schools is around youth employment. You know, this is something actually talking to the youth council about is opportunities. Because there's, there's restrictions, of course, around during the school year, how many hours they can work. And then there's needs on the other side, make sure there's a minor work permit and all these other things. So it would be, I think it'd be really a great opportunity to get our, our business community involved. To have sort of a, a, you know, a, a employment fair and, and show the opportunities for youth to be employed. And, and our area and we would, we would like to have North Thurston Public Schools there. To be able to give, you know, an understanding on that side too, what are the requirements? And I know that, that in some case I needed a, a release form or a parent, you know, signature form. And we're with the school or something like that. So there's, there's a lot of, I know, requirements out there and some opportunity to work with North Thurston Public Schools on. That's something that could be going on all year because you obviously have new sixteen-year-olds or new, you know, kids going into the workforce every year. So that'd be an ongoing. The other thing that in a debrief with the youth council. Is that they were wondering if there was maybe sometimes any opportunities for the city council. The deputy mayor, myself, or the council to go into high schools and do sort of questions and answers along with whoever. Our youth representative may be to sort of not only explain what's going on at the youth council. But to be able to answer questions about the city and, and get feedback that way of an opportunity to get broader feedback from. From the kid, you know, from the youth. And so I think that could be an ongoing collaboration as well. Mine, mine's a quick question. I'm really excited for next year's youth summit and seeing, especially with the more kids that we have work and go. Do we have a tentative timeline on when that will be?
Very tentative, but we are trying to look in more of a January, February, March range. Last year, we competed with the first sunny day of the year, which is, you can imagine, everyone was outside. That's where we want everyone to be. But also, we have found some of the things we offered at the youth summit, such as resume review and preparation for job applications. Doing that early in the year really sets them up to be ready to go for career fairs and college fairs. That typically occur toward the end of their school year. So looking at adjusting that. So they can use the resources we have to set them up for things they're still going to get to experience throughout the rest of the school year. Would really make that a more valuable experience. Also, we heard those months, there's not a lot of sports. The holidays are over. The weather is not as ideal, so youth really need something that they can do and activity that they can attend. So adjusting that to the winter months, I think will make it a lot higher attendance. But then just again, more valuable to our youth and families in the area who can really utilize and need something to do in that time. So we are looking for kind of that late winter time this year and hopes again to set them up for success toward the end of the year. When they do have those college and job opportunities. Our human resources team likes to come in and talk to the youth council about city job opportunities. So that will also work really nicely for them to be geared up with those resumes and headshots and be able to connect with the school. And businesses about opportunities and be ready to go when that time comes.
Hundred percent agree and obviously that's going to come up quick. So whatever we can do to help, just, you know, please do so.
Thank you.
I just was curious with the, with the youth advisors here. You know, when I was growing up, there was a lot of stigmas out there, negative ones, especially when it came to the military. Or learning to trade, stuff like that, you know, we used to have a lot of shop classes, right? Growing up middle school all the way through high school, learning trade and skills. You know, but parents especially, not so much the kid, the kids. But it was considered basically not good if you weren't going to attend college. Or if you went in the military or did anything alternative to college. And I'm, I'm just curious, really, how do students view the, the military and the trades? And I mean, one of the great things I think has changed is the stigma of people just being different, you know? But so that's, that's my question. Any guys want to share on that?
So at least North Thurston High School highlights other options besides college very well. Like last year when we made our posters for which students were going to which college, we also highlighted students who are going into trade or going into military. And what branch of military they, military they are going into. But our school has, at least at North Thurston, they have brought in members from like the army or like employees at like, like lumber. Like companies and that type of stuff to come talk to students to like let them know like, hey, this is an option. And I feel like other options besides college now has like a positive outlook on it and like a positive viewpoint. And I feel like a lot more students are going that route. Like the college just doesn't make sense for some students based off the career that they want to do or they just really want to go in the military and serve the country. So I would say that at least at my high school, there is a very positive outlook on other options pursuing in the next chapter of your life besides college.
Hi, okay, so basically some, some of the same things that Ashley said I can say about Timberline as well. And I think like some of my peers and myself, a lot of our concerns is like future financial stability. And lots of people have this preconditioned idea that if you don't go to college, you won't be financially stable. But at Timberline, like there's a lot of staff that have been able to really open our eyes about alternative options. In the counseling center, there's lots of scholarships for students who want to go to a trade school. And it's specifically geared for students who might not be able to finance, so have the financial burden of paying for college. And just like Ashley said, we have the military visits. Almost every other week, there's a different branch of the military. They come during lunch and they usually have a booth. And students can go and talk to these representatives and learn more information. I think that the program has really grown, like just overall exposure to different post-high school plans. And then additionally in Timberline, we have a lot of classes as well that kind of explore those different career paths. We have like automotive, horticulture, lots of different hands-on classes. Where even if that might not be your plan right now, it can kind of give students an idea of what that career might look like if they were to choose it. And I think it's really helping students who aren't really sure about what they want to do if college isn't right for them. Um, like also, like you were saying how some of the older generations might not or would strictly want students to go to college. Like my parents, they're both in the military and they don't want me to go to the military and they really want me to go to college. But I think River Ridge, as well as with North Thurston and Timberline, they have a lot of different opportunities where you could do things like the military. Or like automotive. We used to have a decision day assembly for seniors at the end of the school year. And then as well as like showing the colleges that students would go to, they also showed the different career paths. Like the different military branches that students were planning to get into. And then also how Kushi was saying about how some students struggle with financial stability. And then like wanting to pursue college, thinking that is their only way for financial support. River Ridge, especially I think this year, we have had a lot of students doing things like Running Start and New Market. And New Market is not college, but different classes that they can take outside of the high school. That can get them into that path of the different careers that they want to do, like nursing or like trade school and different opportunities like that.
And I will share, the youth council, we've been very fortunate. We have a lot of council members who come from military families, military backgrounds. Who share their experiences with their fellow council members and information they have shared. It's like, oh yeah, we don't feel that same stigma, but they recognize that there was that stigma too. So I think having that diverse voice in our youth council really helps that the schools up here are incredible. They have robotics clubs. I don't know if you all had that opportunity in high school. I did not. And that's something our youth council talks about a lot and talking about the access to New Market. And going to see places like. the Lacy Maker space where they can in explore what it would be like to have skills in a trade that aren't necessarily resulting from that post-secondary degree. So that is something they are definitely thinking about too. And when we are planning the youth summit, something they said last year, hey, we had some military people, we had some career people from the city. Can we get some more trade people? So I think that's something that's on their radar that they want to share with their fellow youth in the community too, and something that they, they talk about a lot more than I thought that they would. So it's definitely a great point and a great opportunity to help expand what we can share with them.
And I just wanted to add on to, to Mike's point, but there was a study that came out this year that showed the highest percentage or the career fields with the highest percentage of new millionaires. Number one was HVAC, number two was plumbers. And actually number five was teachers. So there is other options out there besides being a doctor and a lawyer that are really good jobs.
So I just wanted to share with you guys really quick. This council has several people that were in the military on it. Me and Nick, um, deputy mayor's wife is in the army. Musicians, I, I was a tradesperson. Uh, we, most of us own businesses. So we're a lot like you guys, you know, when, when you, when we were young, we're a lot like you guys and where your path goes doesn't determine your, your success. So it's about desire and, and determination and all that stuff. So um, but it's, it's good to see that all these things are more accepted nowadays. We're growing as a community.
Um, it looks like we have lots of opportunities for collaboration. I definitely, from what I've heard, it sounds like one of your four meetings, it sounds like maybe hopefully our youth council can maybe go to that meeting and report out on what we're doing. And I think there's a lot of opportunities for collaboration in the future. And that's, that's great news and, um, I love to hear it. So anything else? And let's go on to our last agenda, which was our a lot surplus property. Vanessa and Craig.
All right. Well, good evening, council, members of the school board. My name's Vanessa Dolby and I'm the director of community economic development here at the city of Lacey and it looks like we're getting the present. Oh, is this better? Maybe a little bit further back. Okay. Let me say that again. Uh, my name's Vanessa Dolby and I'm the director of community and economic development here at the city of Lacey. And we've got the presentation up. I'm here to talk about partnership, maybe in a little bit of a different format versus student relationships, but really looking at, uh, partnership with other organizations and affordable housing. So, um, tonight I'm here to talk about a land acquisition opportunity and partnership with the city of Lacey and Lot. Clean Water Alliance. This button? I work this. Oh, okay. Now that I can work the technology. Okay. So looking at partnerships between the city of Lacey and Lot, Lot has a piece of property that they have identified as surplus. And so we have been coordinating with Lot Clean Water Alliance to look at potentially acquiring this piece of property for a future affordable housing development project. We do need to work with also a housing provider for this, but the reason that this conversation seemed appropriate for this joint meeting this evening is that the property is located directly across the street from the school. And there's additional opportunities to partner potentially with the school district on this endeavor. So affordable housing development is supported by a number of state and local policies as identified in the State Growth Management Act as well as the city of Lacey's adopted, um, housing action plan and housing, affordable housing strategy. The particular piece of property, we have entered into a memorandum of understanding with Lot to look at due diligence on this piece of property. That, um, agreement has advanced an appraisal for the property that comes in at around $700,000 in value. We have also started a gopher analysis. If anyone is familiar with the pocket gopher, we need to make sure that the site is developable. The first half of that study is done. We are going to do a second site visit by the end of October and we'll know the outcome of that at the end of October. And then in this memorandum of understanding, we have until June 30th of 2025 to make a decision as to whether we want to move forwards with the purchase and sales agreement with Lot to purchase this property. So where is it and what is this piece of property? So this piece of property is right across the street from the school, as you can see in the graphic right here, right along Mullen Road at 5025. It's approximately 5.32 acres. It's currently zoned open space institutional. It's a forested piece of property undeveloped today. Um, as noted, it's within the North Hurston School District. Some of the benefits of the site include, include its proximity to the school itself and the school district, medical services, shopping. It's also along, it's served by inner city transit for public transit. And then if you look at the site, there's some actual images from today. Some of the other benefits from a development perspective of this site is that it has a fairly long frontage along Mullen Road, about 850 feet that is currently developed with sidewalk, curb, gutter and landscaping, which takes a significant, um, improvement cost off of a development. It also allows for, uh, multiple access points, which gives you some opportunities for creative design when you talk about the development itself. Furthermore, there's utilities also installed within the road, which also reduces development costs for the project. So what's the vision? So looking at what is the vision for this property? We're hoping to see a cottage affordable housing project built here. And the reason we're focused on cottage is that it really will lend itself well to blend in with the existing surrounding built environment, which is primarily single-family residential around the site. And so the city took that one step further and we did a design charrette internally. And we took a look at the property and bought how many cottage units could we get on this site? So what you see on the screen here is it, it is just conceptual. This was not engineered. So please know that. But we utilized the city's pre-approved ADU plans, which are approximately 800 square feet for the footprints. And we were able to develop five clustered cottage mi- little areas, the word is blanking me right now, with two access points off the road. And then we took this design through our city's, uh, pre-approval process or pre-review process. And that allowed us to look at things like fire access, public works, infrastructure needs and identify any potential big red flags that could be a barrier to development on the site. Uh, following that formal process, we did identify that this really is a possibility to develop this site with 60 cottage units. Mind you, we do need to do engineering and stormwater analyses, finish that gopher study to actually bring this to fruition. But in terms of red flags, it seems feasible and a really, um, potential site for this type of development. So moving forwards, we need a housing partner. So we have this great opportunity to potentially partner with the Housing Authority of Thurston County on the site to move forwards with a cottage vision type of affordable housing project. So in terms of our next steps, I will hand it off to, to Craig here to talk a bit, a little bit about the Housing Authority and what their opportunities and how they see the site moving forwards. But the city's next steps would be to determine whether we want to move forwards to the purchase and sales agreement with Lot. And then we would also need to take a look at the zoning itself and determine if we want to rezone the site or change our development standards. The current zoning does not allow residential development in this cottage format. So we need to make some amendments there. And then formalize a partnership with a housing provider. With that, um, I can answer any questions or I can hand it right off to, to Craig to talk about the next division for the Housing Authority.
Sure, Craig.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, thank you. And, and just the presentation underscores something that I want to get out front. That the city of Lacey staff has just done a jaw dropping, amazing job of working the concept to this point. So my name's Craig Chance. I'm the executive director of the Housing Authority of Thurston County. A little side personal note, I was just thinking sitting here that for the past thirty-three years now, I've lived in the geographic area served by Camatcha. So a pleasure to see the inside of the facility here. For those not familiar, Housing Authority is a public corporation. It's a governmental entity with powers not unlike special purpose districts. Uh, a couple of significant differences. We don't have taxing authority. We don't receive local or state money for operations. So we do receive money from the federal government for operating the housing choice voucher or section eight rental assistance program. Um, and they decide what they think it takes to run the show and then give us a percentage of that. And so you go figure out how to make up the difference. And that comes from our entrepreneurial activities, which is through the ownership of 581 apartment units currently, and we have some others under development, but, um, they're all significantly less than, uh, market rate. Sadie provided a nice transition for us in her presentation here, uh, with one of the concerns of the youth and that was housing instability or outright houselessness. And we have that across all generations. And I'll take a couple of step back, a couple of steps back and share with you how we even got to this point. The Housing Authority, we receive a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails. And a lot of them come from another end of the age spectrum and it's seniors. And one day I got a call from one of the frontline workers. And she said, I know we all get a lot of these calls, but I just have to share this one with you. I just received a call from a woman in her seventies. And she said, I just got a $300 a month rent increase and that my rent will now exceed my social security benefit. And so I've made a decision to move into my car and my only question for all of you is do you have an idea of a safe place to park at night? And having received numerous calls like that, um, you start thinking, well, what's the solution? Cause often there's not a good solution right off the bat. And this is the group of people who nationally are the fastest growing slice of people without any shelter. People who are seniors over sixty-two, most of them homeless for the first time in their life at a very vulnerable age. And describing them in non-bureaucratic terms, they're people whose income is generally limited to only social security check and a modest social security check at that. And you just can't make the ends meet. So what can we do? Well, with the housing choice voucher program, we do serve a lot of seniors, but nationally it's funded at a level by Congress that only serves 20 to 25% of income eligible people, households. So several years ago in the 1990s, the Housing Authority started an effort to acquire and develop housing and to be able to offer it at substantially lower rates than the market, maybe not quite as good as a voucher, but it's a realistic alternative for a lot of demographics. So for the seniors specifically, recently we've tried to do three things. One is we just, um, entered into contract with Low Income Housing Institute Lehigh to provide a monthly subsidy for the next 20 years for their newest property here in Thurston County Lotus Court, so over by the VFW Lodge off of Martin Way. We also started development of a property. We purchased a, a former motel. It was called the Tumwater Inn. We're calling it Sterling Pines. And it will be, um, priced at a level where people trying to make ends meet only on social security, um, can actually afford a decent place to live. And then we had acquired property that we called Sequoia North. It's off of Little Rock Road in Tumwater. And we were pretty deep into the permitting process before we acquired the property. We had done a gopher study. There were no gophers on the property, but in the permitting process, a second gopher study was required, an update. And low and behold, a couple of gophers have moved in. So there will be no development on that property for at least three years. It's a great piece of property. It checks a lot of the same boxes the property across the street does, um, sidewalks, utilities. It's flat, relatively easy to build on. But with the gophers there, there's a lot of work that the city of Tumwater and the port of Olympia are going to have to work out with the, uh, US Fish and Wildlife Service before anybody's going to be able to build on that property. So unfortunately that won't work. And the frustration here is we had acquired approximately four and a half million dollars in grant funds to develop that property. And as you can imagine, the grant funders aren't going to wait three or four years to see what's going to happen with federal decision. And then, thank you, Lacey staff. Again, we heard there's this possibility of the lot property that might be declared surplus. Indeed was declared surplus here a few days ago. And it checks off many of those same boxes and it opens up an opportunity not only for the original 36 cottages we plan to build in Tumwater, but it's a larger piece of property roughly twice as large. And therefore we could build some additional units. And because it's across the street from a school, we're thinking multi-generational, let's do something for families with children that either are assigned or would be assigned to this particular middle school. And that's a demographic, I'm sure on the board and on the city council, you hear from that same demographic. We do. One day I personally got a call from a para educator and she said, once again, large rent increase. Um, I have a small child and I do not know, um, how many more months I can hold on. I've got a little bit of savings, but it's going to quickly diminish and where are we going to go? Once again, no real great answers, but it's individuals and families like that that we could serve with, uh, modest rents that we're able, um, to provide. We have a property out in Tumwater that's a good model for what we're thinking of here. It's called Allen Orchard. And it's across Dennis Street from Peter G Schmidt Elementary. It's 24 units. It's a sort of looks like a cottage village. Tumwater calls them twin homes. It's like duplexes. They look kind of cottage-like though. And what we did with that property is we set some units of what we called market rate, which for us is still quite a bit less than the real market. And then we set some at a level that we thought people like para educators, custodians, perhaps the more modestly paid, um, people that work in the education system could afford without subsidy. And we asked the school district, please refer people that can afford that. They're struggling finding housing, be they employees or student families. And then that property, there were a number of students, as is true in all the districts, um, that are facing the various nightmares of a houseless, homeless or extreme housing insecurity situation. And so we reserved some units for them and asked the school district, please refer to us so we can help support you. And those units, we provided some furnishings in our then commissioner now passed away, Neil McClanahan was helping unload the trucks. And a little boy came along and he said, gosh, I've never had one of these. And Neil said, you mean your own bedroom? And no, the boy said, I've never had a real bed. He'd only been living in broken down RVs or tents. And apparently he was a boy that for all the seemingly obvious reasons is not performing well academically and probably is having a hard time being physically clean, being ostracized by children is unfortunately can happen. But after he was stably housed, housed, one of the administrators told us it was such a nice change in a short period of time, how he started to perform well academically. And I think as close as I can paraphrase the quote, he's now sitting around in the cafeteria as if somebody appointed him prince of England. And so it's just a really nice thing that these things, schools, education, there are, there are connections here. And, um, so we're, we're very hopeful to have that combined, um, community and, and work out some things with the school as well and activities. With Lot, Lots in the Clean Water Business. And I know I talked to folks and, you know, what, what are priorities? And uh, one elected official at state level said, well, I'm really more interested in environmental issues than housing issues. I said, well, we honestly are connected. When you see people who are not housed well, think of that woman who's living in her car. After about nine, 11 o'clock at night, where is she going to use the restroom? Library's closed, Lowe's is closed, place I stop and I'm traveling the freeway. And so they have to do what they have to do. And it was very poignant. One woman, she was in her fifties. Um, she had extreme housing instability, even endured for quite a while in a tent. And after we were able to get her into stable housing, two or three weeks later, she said, what's the best thing about my apartment? I have no idea what's the best thing about your apartment. She said, has a toilet. I feel like a human being again. So yes, it's that moral thing, but also what's that doing for clean water? There are connections with all these issues. So in terms of, you know, what's the, what's the ask or what are we planning on? We're under some extreme time pressure. The grant funders are looking by the end of the year that we have something in writing that, um, I think Vanessa coined the phrase purchase agreement light, zoning light, that at least can indicate in black and white that there's some sincere and MLU, some kind of an agreement we can take to the state and to the county and say, yeah, this is more than likely going to happen. Keep playing with us because there's a necessary public process with all these things, but allow us allow us that time. So that's the ask. And, you know, with our friends at Lot and I talked to Matt, the executive director and said, seven hundred's not a bad price, but lower is better. Uh, the more investment we pay for land, the more we go into construction, all these things are expensive. And I think I've shared with some of you. Um, and some of you may have been at the, at the meeting that, uh, city of Olympia sold the property to Lehigh for a couple of their facilities for a mere buck. And so we'd like to work with Lot to help Lacey and the Housing Authority of Thurston County see what they can do within the responsibilities they have to the ratepayers and to their, um, organization. Lacey, I know you're going to keep working with us. Great. Can't ask for more. Just been, as I said, it's, it's literally jaw dropping and it's appreciated. And I know all the good things that North Hurston does and we'll want to have conversations perhaps. Um, you know, at the principal or at the administration office and what kind of connections we can make and what kind of referrals we can. you know, at the principal or at the administration office and what kind of connections we can make and what kind of referrals we can perhaps have from you and help those students move along and keep doing the noble work together that we all do.
All right. Thank you. You, you mentioned that you have four and a half million dollar in grant funding? So obviously you're not building 60 units with four and a half million. Do you have, are there other resources?
It's a good question. The Housing Authority has some resources for the initial project. There was a conditional commitment from a regional bank for tax exempt bond financing. And what we would do with this project initially is maybe there's some other grant money available, but the bank is certainly interested in increasing its commitment. And we do that with blended. One of the things, you notice our properties, we always say they're financially self-sustaining. So we don't, you won't see blue tarps on our roof. And so we mix income and that provides affordability for the, or choice of word, but enables us to afford to pay that tax exempt bond. And the other thing that we try to do is not segregate communities by income. It's not healthy to have a community of only rich people in gated communities. And it's not healthy to have people only with very low income clustered together. We think it's far healthier financially and socially to blend income. But it would be largely a significant increase in the tax exempt bond financing.
Any other questions from the council or? Obviously, this is something that's very exciting. We've actually have some reserves aside. They've been set aside for quite a while because we've been trying to work, have a project that we could come up with. Specifically looking at having some more housing security for students or their families. And we've been down this road a couple of times trying to make a project work. And we just haven't been able to get there. But we do have some money set aside. I don't think it's the full 700,000, but it is something. I guess it sounds like we will need to do some zoning changes to work, maybe add some language to this current zoning to allow this use. Will that need to all happen before the end of the year for, for you to go forward as well?
Maybe I should have Vanessa address that. She used the term, I think, purchase sale light or zoning light, but something we can document.
Yeah. Thank, thank you for the question, Mayor. I think there's a number of options in terms of how we could move forwards. Obviously, we'll work in partnership with the Housing Authority to make sure that it works for their funding needs, but potentially an option could be memorandum of understanding that says we are agreeing to move forward to the purchase and sale, to sell it to the Housing Authority in some form or the other, and to look at amending our zoning to allow residential. And then we move forwards into 2025 to go through all the steps necessary to accomplish all, all of those things more formally. Just by way of an example.
Okay. Well, I definitely think that's something we should probably do as soon as possible. I'm not sure if you want that direction now to, to move forward from this council.
Thank you, Mary. I think it's something, yes, we would probably looking at scheduling to start talking about the MOU that Vanessa mentioned and setting the stage in order to make sure we can keep the grant funding commitment for the Housing Authority and show a progress or steps by step in the progress we'll tend to take, so.
Okay. Well, let's, yeah, hopefully get started on that. And we look forward to getting an update as soon as possible. The other thing is with our pre-approved planning, I'm not sure if that's going to come close to incorporate the cottage side too, but that could obviously save the project some money as well. And I'm, I'm sure we can make some amendments to make that happen as well. So something to think about. Is there any other questions from anyone here?
Can you tell me what the original intent of the land was?
I, now Rick may know best off the top of his head, but my understanding is that it was for a reclaimed water facility from Lot. And they did a, a study and the site was not meeting their goals and objectives.
That's right.
And, and another question, oh, what kind of service? Is it temporary homes that you're building or they're permanent homes? Okay.
Permanent.
And then what kind of services will you provide for your residents who are coming into a situation where they could have been houseless for a long time?
We, we have a division called Housing Stability that provides services that can be as basic as, you know, let's get your identification secured. Sometimes basic life skills. The majority of the individuals that would be in the property are probably not at the level that require intensive services. The Housing Authority's lane really isn't shelter housing, but there can be a blend like the example I gave of individuals who've come from exceptionally difficult circumstances. Michael Althouser, council member over in Tumwater, I think phrased it well when we were talking about actually the Sequoia North as well as the Sterling Pines projects over there. He said, I think what we're primarily talking about is people who don't necessarily have a cognitive behavioral health problem. What they have is a fiscal problem. They simply can't afford market rate rent in our community. And that, it's a pretty good description of our primary clientele.
Well, it's exciting. We've, we've known for a while that Lot was looking at surplusing this. And then, you know, it's been on our minds for a while, like what could we possibly do? And so it's, it's great to see this possible partnership. Makes a lot of sense with, with the school right here to be able to, you know, coordinate with them as well. So that's exciting. And I think as council's very supportive of seeing what the next step could be.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, of course. Is there any other questions? Well, we, we have reached the end of our agenda, but before I end this meeting, I think this is a good time for sort of like good the order. Is there any anything that any of the council or board wants to bring up for maybe a future topic or anything else? Don't mean to put you on the spot, Ben.
Well, I, I already had an opportunity to talk about the cell phone, social media issue, but I, I really would love for our council to explore a way we can support the school district's decision and to help educate the community about why this is important and what they have to gain by doing that.
I, I think there's a lot of opportunities for us to continue to collaborate on really important issues for, you know, for both of us. And the other thing that, you know, obviously pops mind, we're about ready to get to some information from our work group or our park work group on, on funding strategies. Obviously that is something that, you know, impacts both of us. And, you know, once that finding comes out, I would love to have an opportunity to sort of, you know, brief the board and see if we can come up, come up with strategies with whether or how they're, they're talking about implementing that. Ways we can work together because, you know, there's not only opportunities for maybe the, the, the family center, but the family center, but there's several parks and everything else that's in our community that we'd love to see get developed that will be both mutually beneficial. So that's another opportunity.
If I can just take a moment, I do want, you know, this is a, been a great meeting at a remote location in the new, newly remodeled Kamasha Middle School. I want to thank Troy and the school district staff for coordination for this agenda, as well as the space and setup at the tables and chairs and the meeting format. And also want to thank our city clerk's office and communication team for being able to set up and do a remote recording and AV and AV equipment as well. So I just want to thank everybody and this has been a, a great evening.
I look forward to more of these sort of collaborations, you know, at North Thurston Public Schools, out maybe, you know, in, in other different scenarios like this as well. So I really appreciate it as well.
I was so glad that you guys were here. River Ridge, Timberline, North Thurston, because your input is so valuable to us. And the fact that you guys could come here and get to talk and express what's going on in your schools and we could ask you questions is something that I don't think we've had a lot of, or should I say enough of? So I hope in future meetings, we continue to see representation from, from your guys' different schools.
I agree. And I, I maybe in a future meeting, we'll bring our youth council here. And it is always amazing to see our youth council at the beginning of the school year. And then see them grow throughout the year and see them at the end of the school year, give their final report out. Cause their first report out there, you know, it's like not used to being on camera and having to report out, but by the end of the year, they've grown so much. And we have so, the future is bright with our youth. And I just want to thank North Thurston Public Schools for for all you do for their education and, and Creighton, you know, great people in our community. So it's really appreciated. So.
I had mentioned that our kids had graduated. We're empty nesters, right? But I, I wanted to bring some awareness and, and attention to, you know, this, the school needs support, even though you don't have kids in the school. It builds up a better community. There's, there's communities out there that they don't support the school district because what's in it for me, their kids are gone. So I think it's very important as us as a community to make sure that we continue to support the school district and our students alike, even if we don't have kids in school. It's, it helps in emergency management. It helps public safety. It keeps us all engaged and, and neighbors that know one another are vested in each other. Same with the business community. And so this is a message I, I feel is very important that we, we stick together and we remember that somebody paid for our education. And students coming up after us need to have the same support. Thank you.
Very well put. Thank you. Okay. With that, we have reached the end of our agenda. So without objection, I will call this work session adjourned. And as always, you keep it classy, Lacey.